Is my chair so low?
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody here today and those viewing online. We've got a full house here today. Nice to see. We also have a full council here today as well as Cliff Gravia, our town manager, Terry Teeman, our assistant town manager, Raylene Menomni, Menomnae, our town clerk, Will Wharton, our IT director, and Chief Patrick Foley, our chief, Justin Norman, deputy chief, and we have a few others here today, too. I think I see Nick Lano back there, Officer Nick Lano, Officer Andrew Rogers, Amy Cresto, who, I thought I saw her, oh, there she is.
She's hiding back there.
Officer Benjamin Trexler, and I think I got everybody. Did I miss anybody?
Too many in the hour.
Oh, well, yes, I'm sorry. Too many in the hour. Sergeant Joshua Fulton and PFC Grayden Meredith. Please stand for the.
Legislatives to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August the fifteenth, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the special organizational meeting minutes held September twenty-second, 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the financial report. Mrs. Teal.
Thank you, Mayor. This report covers the budget through September thirtieth, 2025. We are fifty percent through fiscal year 2026. We collected seventy-three point five percent of our revenue for the year compared to seventy-two point six last year. We've expended fifty-five point six percent of our expense budget compared to fifty-six point three last year. Recognizing that this report is subject to audit, I move that the council approve this unaudited report.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Announcements. I think we've already recognized all our visitors. I'm gonna, I've got one announcement I want to make. I'd like to point out, although I suspect everyone is fully aware, that the towns Beach and Dune took a significant hit this past week from a severe several-day nor'easter. Our streets were flooded. Our police and public works departments put in many long hours taking steps to protect our citizens and limit damage. As you may have seen, the police went door-to-door advising everyone in the flood-prone areas north of Garfield and Route twenty-six of the situation and necessary safety steps. We made it through the storm, but it is, it only goes to demonstrate the extreme importance of our engineered beach and dune system and proposed mechanical loop canal dam which could have prevented most of the street flooding. The Dune and Beach took the hits of the giant rolling waves and protected the boardwalk, our businesses, our bandstand, and our homes. It only goes to emphasize their importance to Bethany's infrastructure, our safety, and our economy, as well as that of the entire state. Replenish Bethany and the state of Delaware is not a want, it's a major need. Okay, I'm gonna pass this on to Rich. I think he's got a report on our legislative issues.
A couple things. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to notice the assembly is not in session right now, so that has allowed my mind to wonder, which is always a dangerous thing. But I want to bring up a couple of things that we've talked about before. One is, and we talked about this, I think, the last meeting, the report of the Sussex County Land Use Reform Working Group was submitted to the county council. It was late, but it was submitted. The council held a meeting this week, Tuesday, I think, the fourteenth, on the recommendations. There were twenty recommendations that this working group came up with. It's a long document. It's on the website if everyone wants to look at it. It's clear, well, it's not clear exactly what the county's gonna do about it, but it is clear whatever happens with it, it'll take some time. Some of these proposals will take years to work out, so. And the goal of this thing is to moderate growth in the county, and I just want to give you some data on that because I just found this striking. Sussex County's population is now approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand people. That's up thirty percent in the last ten years. By comparison, Newcastle is up seven percent and Kent is up twelve percent. So the growth down here has been, I mean, it's unbelievable. So they're trying to do what they can. It's not necessarily no growth, but I guess what they're shooting for is smart growth. So, so we'll see how that happens. The flip side of that is a second issue I want to talk about, which is this new shopping center. So despite growth and despite crowdedness conditions, the Sussex County Zoning Commission, I think it's called the Planning and Zoning Board, approved this new shopping center up in the Lewis area, which will be roughly half the size of Christiana Mall, and include stores such as Whole Foods, Costco, Target, and as of this morning, Nordstrom Rack, which some people in the crowd might be very happy about. And it's now going to the council for their approval, and to my knowledge, they never say no to something that's been approved by the zoning and planning and zoning board, so I guess this is gonna happen. I don't know what the timeline that it's on. The thing is called Atlantic Fields, or will be called Atlantic Fields. The third thing I wanted to point out, as we talked about before, is marijuana. This is part about my mind wandering, I guess. The state legislature had passed a bill trying to impose limits on what the counties could do for saying where marijuana facilities could be located, and the reason they passed the legislation is they were trying to overrule Sussex County because Sussex County took a very restrictive view about where things could go. It was one of the last bills passed, and it was one of the few bills Meyer, Governor Meyer vetoed. And the reason he vetoed it was because of local control, saying that local control was so important. So he did veto that bill, so Sussex County's restrictions have not been overridden, but Sussex County did promise the governor that they would go back and look at their restrictions and try to make them more generous. I'm not sure how to say that, but less restrictive, I guess. So we'll still see what. This doesn't affect us directly in the town because it doesn't override the fact that towns like our town have said you cannot have marijuana facilities in towns. So it affects us indirectly, but not directly. And then the last thing I just want to talk about, just because I was reading it the other day and I thought it was interesting. U.S. News and World Report came out with their annual survey of states and ranking the states as places to live, and Delaware came in eighteenth out of fifty, if you don't count Greenland and Canada. And the reason we didn't come in higher, the two things where we, well, we did, I'll point out, we were ahead of New Jersey and ahead of Maryland in terms of our neighbors and slightly behind Virginia, but the areas that we sort of got dinged on were crime, which I think is crime up in Newcastle County, and education, which is a problem I think the state has generally. But I think if you read this, they had a fairly nice write-up about our state, so we should feel happy, I think, in the place that we've chosen to call home. So I just thought that was interesting. And that's it.
Thank you, Rich. Quite informative. It's always good to hear those.
Mayor, could I add one comment in building off yours in terms of recognition? Just a special thanks to the public works team, the police department, and preparation for the storm that was, came and the recovery efforts. It really is remarkable, and that extra effort to notify people and let them know the issues and the challenges was just super. So I just thank you for all the work that went into that. Thank you.
Public comment, is there anyone present who would like to say something? If so, go to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on. I am gonna make an adjustment here in the progression of things in, on the agenda. I'm gonna move up the promotions of Sergeant Joshua Fulton and PFC Grayden Meredith so that they don't have to listen to the committee reports. Okay, before I turn it over to Chief Foley, I'd like to say that I've had an opportunity and had numerous interactions with both Josh and Grady. Josh is a longtime community active officer, often involved with town reach-out events, including safety and the J-ones. Grady has been with us full-time for going on two years, not there yet, but going on. Many of us had the honor to attend his graduation at the State Police Academy. Josh and Grady are two of Bethany's finest. Both officers came through the seasonal program, do, as have most of the department, a fact that always totally amazes me, and I think it just plays on the, you know, the tightness and the greatness of our police force. It is an honor to see both of them, both of these fine officers, advance in the police department. Chief Foley, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just want to say, a year ago, last year, at the town council meeting, we did a promotion ceremony and I was assaulted, so I hope everybody's on their best behavior. Mayor, council, town manager, thank you, A, for your time, for the Bethany Beach Police Department today, also for your support, more importantly. We are, Mayor just said it, we're a tight-knit family. It is nice for members of the staff to be recognized for their loyalty and dedication to the town, so for that, I thank you. We're here today to recognize the dedication of two officers, Patrolman Grady Meredith and Joshua Fulton. Call you guys up one by one. Grady, we'll go with you first. You wanna come stand up here? PFC Grayden Meredith, he's originally from Downingtown, Pennsylvania. He obtained his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from West Chester University in 2022. Meredith was first hired as a seasonal police officer. Ten out of the twelve Bethany Beach Police Officers were prior seasonals. We call it our farm system, and we're the big leagues. He returned for the summer of 2023 after the completion of his second year. He was hired full-time by the Bethany Beach Police Department and attended the Delaware State Police Academy. PFC Meredith is one of those officers who works hard, never complains, and never seeks recognition for his efforts. He's the true definition of a dedicated and reliable officer, and the agency is better because of him. PFC Meredith, while only have been full-time for two years, has made a significant impact to the town and the residents of Bethany Beach. Meredith assists PFC Contour with providing our seasonal recruitment efforts as well as physical fitness standards during their three-week rigorous training academy. I feel like he's probably the most in-shape officer here, too, so it goes without saying why he does that. In addition, PFC Meredith has had a great role in our recruitment efforts for our seasonal program, attending local colleges and universities. I think last week, he just attended his alma mater, West Chester University, and we got one application by the time he got back into Delaware, so it shows his diligent efforts up there. Meredith is also very community-oriented when it comes to policing, whether it's talking to children about highway safety out in the boardwalk or attending any community event he is assigned to. Meredith is a great example of what Bethany Beach Police Department stands for: community, compassion, commitment, and professionalism. I believe his mother is gonna come up and present the badge. You can have whoever you want.
No, 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 I thought he gave it to his dad.
Oh, I got that. I was the best man in the lady before I pressed it. Next, Josh Fulton. Josh Fulton, originally from West Grove, Pennsylvania, received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from West Chester University in 2012. There's a common trend here, Pennsylvania-West Chester grads. Sergeant Fulton was first hired as a seasonal police officer for the summer of 2014, where he made a very strong first impression as a dedicated and reliable seasonal officer. This led to an immediate full-time position in the fall of 2014. Sergeant Fulton has served the residents and visitors of the town of Bethany Beach for over eleven years with compassion, dedication, and willingness to lead. Fulton wears many hats in the agency, including, but not limited to being a firearms instructor, ASP, baton, and handcuffing instructor. That's our use of force, very important. He's a certified police instructor, certified child seat, car seat installer, which I think he's trying to get rid of as soon as possible. He's also a fleet manager for our patrol fleet, which you can imagine, twelve cars, oil changes, tire rotation services. He does a fantastic job with that. Most recently, Sergeant Fulton was placed at a charge of the agency's police diversion program throughout the state of Delaware, one of four or five agencies that participate in this program. And what this is, is an initiative to help those individuals suffering from mental or substance abuse. So we, instead of enforcing the law, we kind of guide them to a mental health facility or diversion program from the courts. We go around the judicial system to get them the help that they need, and that goes to show his personality because he jumped right into it and was one-hundred percent on board for it, and just goes to show the character that he is. He has a heart for serving this community, which obviously made him the perfect choice for the police diversion program facilitator. It's important to note, all these assignments are in addition to his normal day-to-day operation and a supervisor of a shift. It's my honor to publicly announce Josh Fulton's promotion to the rank of sergeant. Bree, is she here? His, last week he was married? His beautiful bride's gonna come up here and. I'll be stay or sit.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Did you get that, Will?
If I may for a moment, Chief Foley pitched this to me, and it was so entertaining that I thought he should talk to the community about it, so Chief, please.
Sir, you were in for a wild treat. So I, as well as many members of the Bethany Beach Police Department, are here for pitching the idea of a charity drive on behalf of the officers of the Bethany Beach Police Department from our own pocket. And it goes like this. No Shave November is what it's officially called. It's a nationwide charity event. Majority of police departments participate in, predominantly because it's a male-dominated profession. We are, the Bethany Beach Police Department is intending to forego grooming standards to raise funds for cancer research. Bethany Beach Police Department is known for an exceptional professionalism, police department. We often joke, we look like we're going to church every time we hit the streets, and we hold ourselves to a higher standard based on the way we physically appear and present ourselves in uniforms. Our intent is to forego grooming standards, which include haircuts, shaving cream, razor blades, et cetera, to look professional. We did a study for local police departments, maybe within like four or five hours away, that kind of resemble the Bethany Beach Police Department. This is Dover. They have a very large agency, it's a hundred and one sworn officers. They donated a dollar per day for the month of November for the officers participating, totaled at least thirty dollars per officer. They gave their research, their donation money to the Delaware Proster Coalition. I'm not gonna click all these links, they are, they're Facebook posts, advertising the event, as well as news articles advertising their recruitment efforts, their donation efforts. This is the Caroline County Sheriff's Department. This is about an hour away in Maryland. They raised funds with their Shop With A Cop Day. Officers donated money to charity where they bought gifts for kids in their community. They raised eighteen thousand dollars from their officers in the charity drive for this, which goes directly to their community. The Newcastle County Police Department, they raised funds for the Delaware Ovarian Cancer Foundation. The officer in the bottom-left corner passed from that, God bless her, as well as the Christian Cancer Research Institute. That Newcastle County Police Department raised thirteen thousand dollars total, they went to two separate charities. Newark Police Department raised funds for the Delaware Food Bank. To participate, each officer had to raise a hundred dollars. That money went to food. They collected more than eight hundred pounds of food that went directly to their community. Millsboro Police Department, this is actually my favorite one. This is quite unique. The officers named it Whiskers for Wishes. My wife is a schoolteacher in Millsboro, and I have two kids in the school system. They donated, their officers donated, raised more than five thousand dollars, and it goes right to the kids of the community throughout the town of Millsboro, as well as the schools, backpacks, Christmas gifts, whatever kids needs, it goes right to the community. Lakewood Police Department in New Jersey, officers donated money along with the option for the community to buy a ten-dollar shirt which advertised their efforts. Funds were donated to prostate cancer research and awareness. Salbeville Police Department, we're getting more local, raised money for, from officers for their holiday fund, which gave them directly to families in need during the holiday season around Salbeville and Sussex County. Wildwood Police Department in New Jersey raised twenty-five hundred dollars from participating officers to fund their department youth camp, which is very unique. It helps, a youth camp that builds children's leadership, teamwork, and communication skills. Lewis Police Department donated five hundred dollars for their raised cause. It went directly to BB Healthcare's Tunnel Cancer Center, which is obviously right in their own town. Delaware River Port Authority, these are the boats that go from Cape May Lewis Ferry, as well as the bridges. They did something similar, it's called Movember, it's a No Shave November-like foundation. Their research, their money goes to cancer and breast cancer foundations. Female members were permitted to wear custom-colored hats during the month in part of their uniform, and they raised over fifteen hundred dollars. The BBPD objective, each officer is attempting to donate a hundred dollars. Sir, I told you you were gonna regret this. Each officer's trying to donate.
You're accredited to the profession, so.
Each officer's trying to donate a hundred dollars of their own pocket. I'm gonna extend that, and they can have the option to double up for the month of December as well, so we can all look like this. We're gonna forego the grooming policy. We have twelve officers that want to participate, including our intern. That's a minimum of twenty-four hundred dollars from our own pockets. That's gonna go directly to charity. Bethany Beach Police Department, we plan on advertising the charity on our social media handles, put a link out that's gonna go directly to the foundation, and it's gonna go directly to their proceeds, so we're gonna advertise that where our family and friends and whoever wants to can donate to that link, too, on our Facebook and Instagram sites, goes directly to charity. So twenty-four hundred is from the officers, who knows what the money can get to. The charity that we participate in is Justin's Beach House. I don't know if anybody's heard it, it's seven blocks from here. It's in Bethany Beach. It's local, we know exactly where our money is going to, and we're giving back directly to our community. Long story short about Justin's Beach House. Justin suffered from cancer, lived at Wilmington, always loved vacationing down in Bethany Beach. He passed away, I believe, 2003, 2004. His family beat this, built this beach house in Bethany Beach. It's on Garfield Parkway in between Turtle Walk entrances, and all the money, cancer patients come there free for vacation, and it's all paid for, their vacation's paid for by charity. Our intention is to help pay their electric bill, grass cutting, whatever kind of services that they could need. I spoke to Chris Coyle, who's on the Justin Beach House Board of Directors, and he was ecstatic with this idea and was highly for it. I also spoke to Justin's mom, Mary Ellen Nantes. She was very grateful for the Bethany Beach Police Department doing this on behalf of her late son. I served as the vice president of the Fraternal Order of Police in 2009, and we had a charity drive at Bethany Blues and donated that money to Justin's Beach House as well, so. We're very grateful that you guys are allowing this. We won't look this foolish, I promise, and January first, we'll clean it up and look like we do today. That's it.
Chief, is this something that the laypeople can help donate to?
So we'll advertise our link on social media. We're gonna do a before-and-after picture. Our idea is to present a check to Justin's Beach House after, with all of our facial hair, with the awards that we, the money that we receive during the donation drive. Now we'll include the general public donation, too. So Bethany Beach, right off the bat, twenty-four hundred dollars for the officers to participate in this program, and then the general public can click the link on our social media pages and then donate however many dollars they want to do it. It's through, I believe, through PayPal, credit cards, it's very easy to do on their website. All of our instructions will be provided when we do the social media post very late October.
And what we'll do is do a news flash to our twenty-some-hundred, at least twice, two or three times, to let everybody know the link exists and explain what's going on here, so.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because there are some of us who are not on social media.
We'll need pictures of Foley with the beard, but we'll do that. Foley with the beard, yes.
Okay.
What he didn't show is that he had his patch, their sacred patch with a mustache on it.
I took it off, sir.
Get it off, okay.
After your suggestion.
Rosemary?
I have a better idea.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
No, I was thinking that if you really wanted to get public participation and people to donate, I would really donate if there was a public shaving off and cutting of your hair that we could all watch. Or maybe one of us could win the prize of being able to do it. do it.
You know, another thing, it might be nice if we could get the representatives from Justin's Beach House over and have the presentation possibly right here in Town Hall.
Yeah, sure. We'll, we'll absolutely do that. That'll be the plan for January. When we do the check, we'll, we'll do that right here.
Okay. Sounds great.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. We'll clear out so you guys can go on with your meeting.
You can stay if you want to.
We don't want to bore you to death.
Yep.
Take care, guys.
And thank you, Josh, and thank you, Bailey. Okay, we will move into reports now. Report of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee.
Okay, we had our meeting in August, covered a lot of good business and really was somewhat of a review of the current season. But the thing I really want to highlight is what's coming up. This coming Thursday, as we've done the last couple of years, we've opened this up for public comment, public ideas. So our Thursday meeting of the Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Committee will really be to solicit ideas of improvement from the community. And we've gotten some great ideas over the last couple of years, some of which we've been able to act on, and we'd like to add to that list. It's not to sit there and critique. It's not to, to design it, but it's really to do a brainstorm kind of session where we give the opportunity for all our residents to share their ideas on areas that we want to focus on. So that's coming up on Thursday and invite all the community to, to take that advantage, to share their ideas.
Teresa?
I don't have a lot to add, other than that committee was started five years ago, four, five years ago, because the community members asked the town council to act on these issues. So we feel it's part of our mission to find out what you guys are concerned about and see what we can do to help resolve those issues. So if you can't make the meeting, please send an email or call Town Hall or talk to one of us, but we, we really do want to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Moving on, the next one is the Police Accountability Committee. Mrs. Hardeman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Police Accountability Committee held its quarterly meeting on September 9th, 2025. We recently amended our scope of work on the town's website, excuse me, to include a statement that suggestions and recommendations regarding ways to enhance the operation of the police department are welcome and should be sent to PAC at its designated email address, which is PAC, P-A-C, at townofbethanybeach.com. And those will be forwarded to the police department. Police Chief Foley provided an update on important items since PAC's last quarterly meeting in June. He reported that one of the big events that took place in town was a No Kings Rally protest on Saturday, June 14th, at the town park. The police department had to logistically plan for the event on very short notice. They were grateful that they were notified, by the way. They had originally been advised that there would be 100 to 125 people. However, 1,200 to 1,400 showed up. The police department planned for the worst-case scenario. They had offices remotely located and they also notified the fire department, county medics, and the surrounding police agencies in, in the event any of them were needed, and fortunately they weren't. The organizers of the event wrote to the police chief afterwards, saying that attendance far exceeded their expectations and that the level of professionalism shown by the Bethany Beach Police Department provided a safe feeling for the hundreds of attendees. And I think it's a tribute to the police, our police chief, deputy chief, and all the officers of our police department that they were able to respond so professionally and so quickly and thoroughly on such short notice. And I'm also pleased, they were pleased to report that the Office of Highway Safety Administration, who had suspended their, their grants, had suspended them from receiving funds last year because of the actions of the previous police department, police administration. But Chief Foley said, based on a recent audit, the Office of Highway Safety has awarded the police department all of their targeted funds for the Click It or Ticket DUI speeding, reckless driving, cellphone or distracted driving, and pedestrian education campaigns. And he explained that this is extremely important because it provides the town with dedicated patrols for these purposes, which are separate from and in addition to the regular patrols. So for example, if there are three officers working 4:00 PM to 4:00 AM and one officer is paying overtime with these funds to target any of those areas, it helps, it provides more safety for the town residents and visitors. He also reported on the numerous police department community engagement events over the past, over the summer, including the June and September craft shows, worked with J1 students, Special Olympics torch run, participating in Sea Colonies Summer Kids Camp, bicycle safety checkpoints, and providing and installing over 280 bike lights. The next thing we talked about was a report and lessons learned from the ride-alongs. Now, under PAC, under the state law, PAC members are required to have 20 hours of training in the first year in which they are appointed. And to achieve this, we participated in classroom sessions, both with our, our sworn officers, as well as the seasonal officers. And the remaining hours for all of us has consisted in ride-alongs with various officers. At the September meeting, three of us who've completed the ride-alongs talked about our experiences. Some of the feedback included remarks about the professionalism of our officers and how well they worked together. One PAC member said how impressed, what, what impressed him the most on the ride-along was the conduct of the officers. The way they explained what they were doing, both to the person, as well as to the, the person that they had stopped, and the way they approached people. He added that what he saw at the traffic stops was a balance between enforcement and education. And that's something that Chief Foley has always commented on, is that they, they would rather do education rather than enforcement. And they've done a great job with that. And that's just what these officers do. It's remarkable to do a ride-along and see how the training and the policies and practices and leadership, he said, are reflected back on the PD and its leadership. One PAC member said that he was impressed with the technology in the patrol car, that there are many police stations, the way the information flows and the time it saves. And then what we did after that was, we reviewed, because we're supposed to be familiar with policies as well and to comment on them, Chief Foley answered questions regarding the PD, PD policies that we had raised, that came about because of our ride-alongs. And some of those were a policy on detention of juveniles, an explanation of the juvenile offender civil citation program, and as well as how the dispatch system in Delaware works and when an officer is authorized to respond to calls. And our next quarterly meeting is Tuesday, December 2nd. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardeman. Okay, the next report, the Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee, Mrs. Kalif.
The Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee meeting, scheduled for October 15th, was canceled because we did not have a quorum. The recent nor'easter and concerns about flooding prompted people to leave town, and unfortunately, they were unable to come back in time for our meeting. But because there were no reports in September due to the reorganization meeting, I will give you our September report, the majority of which transfers into October. Summer visitors to the Dinkerton Urban Museum totaled 282. August was our highest month ever since we've been open. We had 136 people come to tour our museum. Along with our neighboring states, we had visitors from Arizona, California, Connecticut, Florida, North Carolina, Indiana, Texas, New York, Ohio, and Ireland. And as of October 1st, we are now open only Saturdays from 11 to 1. Our annual docent appreciation luncheon was held at Cottage Cafe. The luncheon is a thank you for the many volunteer hours dedicated to the Dinkerton Urban Museum. So thank you to all of our volunteers. We couldn't do it without you. We are currently in the planning stages for our December event, Christmas at the cottages. I will say, a very special guest from the past, yeah, from the past, will be joining us this year. I'm not at liberty to share that information with you today, but I can tell you, it'll be an event you won't want to miss. The Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee, this will be an ad for us now, is welcoming new members. Do you love local history and want to help preserve the stories that make Bethany Beach special? Whether your interests lie in organizing events or helping with projects and community outreach, your time and talents can make a difference, and we'd love to hear from you. Our email address is CHAC, C-H-A-C, at townofbethanybeach.com, or please come to one of our meetings. Meetings are held on the second Tuesday of the month at 10:00 in Town Hall. The only exception to that will be our November meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, November 12th at 10:00, due to Veterans Day on the Tuesday, the 11th. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next report will be the Stormwater and Flood Committee. Norm Lai, I like to have one of the members do it, and Bruce is usually my, my go-to. Unfortunately, Bruce missed the meeting this time. But it's because of a family event and, and so I, I will, I'll give it this time. But you're on next month. We had a meeting of the Stormwater and Flood Committee on Friday, September the 26th, with all members present, except Bruce.
Boy, you're being put on the spot today.
We had the privilege of having Kevin Brinson, the Delaware State Climatologist, present, reporting on historical climate changes and trends over the 21st century. Looking ahead, he provided some stirring facts that our state and Bethany will have to address in the century, in, as the century progresses. His entire report is available, if anybody wants to see it, on the town website. So take a look. It, it is very interesting. Chip Smith reported on a committee trip to the Delaware Climate Action Plan Engagement Session in Georgetown. We attended the, and reported on a state and federal legislators engagement and demonstration event put on at, by Denarek and the US Army Corps of Engineers at the Indian River Inlet on the dredging, which is going on up there now, and a future jetty repair, which is coming up in the spring. And they as well showed, gave an operational preview of the pump system, which pumps sand from the south side to the north side, basically replenishing it continuously during the year. And it is operational now. And it's, it's kind of amazing, just a quick fact about it, they, they've operated already for eight days and it moved 15,000 cubic yards of sand in eight days. So that's pretty impressive, actually. So if it's operating sporadically during the year, it'll move a lot of sand and, and probably avoid some of the need for dredging, which you see up there now. So reduce our costs. One of the things that was discussed up there was the dismal state of federal funding right now. There were Chris Coons and Sarah McBride were present and kind of gave us a little report on that. Unfortunately, we're not seeing much money coming out of the federal arena right now. The Back Bay Study was discussed and it is, is, is progressing, but it's still a minimum of four years out to complete. We discussed and completed town resilience efforts in Bethany West, in the Bethany West community, where a large swale and drainage system have been cleared and flushed, as well as a possible grant, which is being reviewed for, and I'm not sure, we received that grant?
Yes, we received the grant.
Boy, that's great. That's great. Which will study additional resilience measures in that area. Our town manager reported on the seemingly positive progress of our Loop Canal Flap Dam and the currently starting Loop Canal Bulkhead work and Living Shoreline work. We also reported on the Bethany homeowners helped the Town of Bethany Beach Fight Flooding Effort. You'll see our A-frames up around town. They're up right now down at the, down at the bandstand. And if you haven't gotten one of the pamphlets, please, please take one. They are available right out here in the, in the lobby as well. And that's the report for the Stormwater and Flood Committee. Budget and Finance, Mrs. Keel.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 16th, to review the second quarter of fiscal year 2026. Town revenues for the first half of the year were 11.2 million, which is 12% higher than the last fiscal year. This is mainly due to increases in the parking fees and water rates and transfer taxes being twice what they were at this point last year. Parking and other summer revenues showed that there is a decrease in visitors this year. The number of parking hours purchased declined by 8.2%. And water use over the summer months was down 10% compared to last year. Townwide operating expenses were 7.2 million, which is 8% higher than last year. This is mainly due to higher personnel costs from the police and beach patrol. We also saw increased cost to clear stormwater ditches, install tidal monitors, and an increased number of bandstand performances. We expect to end the fiscal year under budget in operating expenses. The committee had a preliminary discussion of our next year's budget. We are due for an increase in property taxes. We've been increasing this by about 3% every three years, which equates to 1% per year. The next Budget and Finance Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, January 15th at 10:00 AM. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Keel. The Board of our Town Manager.
Mayor, Council. As we all know, as you spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor, the, the condition of the beaches is really, really sad at this point in time, this early in the year. We are, have a circumstance similar to one we had a number of years ago, where we've lost enough beach and there's enough dune exposed that the ramps immediately adjacent to the boardwalk are not open, nor are they likely to open. The, the six-foot drop, which is six foot today, but if we continue to lose sand, it will increase up to about 10 feet in, in terms of the edge of the dune, is a drop that we can't repair. There's not enough sand for us to push to the, to those, to those walkways, to those pathways, to create the sort of walkway that would be safe and navigable for anyone. So they will stay the way they are, absent some sort of intervention by the state or the federal government. The ramps in north and south of the boardwalk, Wellington is problematic. The handicap ramp there is gone. The only handicapped access we have now is at Ocean View Parkway. We really don't know what to expect going forward. The mayor has mentioned that there is not any money allocated for the routine replenishment of beaches across America. There is money for replenishment for the Corps if the Corps declares an emergency, a circumstance of an emergency. And we do know that the Corps will be doing, doing an evaluation of Delaware's beaches here this coming week. I don't know if the damage to our beach constitutes an emergency for the Corps, but I know certainly future storms will create the situation where we will have, we will have that emergency. I will note selfishly that the dune fence in Rehoboth is 100% intact. The storm fence in Dewey Beach is 100% intact. And as the local media has pointed out on all of the local television stations here, over the last 48 hours, Bethany Beach has suffered the most damage as a result of these last two storms. So not, not good looking forward. Ramps are closed. So, not, not good looking forward, ramps are closed, we have tried to put out as much notice as we could, so everyone is aware of what is open and what isn't. We've done a newsflash, it's on our neon sign at the board, boardwalk in the guardhouse, and we were trying to make people aware. We've had a lot of phone calls regarding what is open and what is closed. Regarding the storm, a huge thank you to the police department, they quickly mobilized, had, had planned well for, for the storm. Full timers were in, went door to door in areas where people needed to be notified, did a great job, yeoman's job with that work. Put a lot of stress on the chief and the deputy chief, and they, they handled that well. And again, a huge thanks to Public Works after the storm, for all the work they've done and continue to do to, to clean up the mess, if you will, from that storm. The sidewalk on Route 26 that's part of our Route 1 and 26 crosswalk enhancement is due to be bid here in the next couple of weeks. The package is ready, we're ready to mail it out, but the one thing we're going to do before that is have a discussion with the contractor who's doing the work at the, the diner at Half Moon. That's A-Dell Construction Company. A-Dell is the company that's done our park and other substantial work for us in the past. Since they're mobilized, since they're here, the engineer's estimate for the construction of that sidewalk was $103,000, and maybe in a discussion or dialogue with them, they might be able to begin this sooner rather than later for us. So, we'll have that discussion and hope that works out for us. We've had a discussion over the last several months over the condition of the boardwalk plaza and the, the substructure underneath the paved portion of the plaza. We have an old, a very old stabilizing wall, bulkhead, underneath that paved portion that's beginning to deteriorate. Our engineers have come back to us with a couple of recommendations regarding how we might prevent that from failing, and maybe even enhance the, the strength of the structure there to prevent any future wave damage to the guardhouse, and they promised to have us a design for their proposed enhancement, which is a, a mobilized earth, earthen wall that's constructed on the west side of the, the current stabilized wood, wood, wooden substructure underneath the boardwalk. They'll have a 90% design for us, along with a more concrete cost estimate here in the next few weeks, and hopefully that's something we can bring to bid definitely off-season. The estimated cost for that work at the point in time that they gave us their initial design concept was $97,000. In talking about our, our schedules and, and our show schedules for entertainment, we added shows this past season, late in the season, to try to make our entertainment more available to people that don't want to fight the crowds here in the summertime. Unfortunately, late season saw us cancel, cancel eight events, moved two, up, rescheduled two more, for a total of 12 impacted events here late in the season. So, maybe as we plan and we look at what we're going to finance in terms of events, we relook at whether or not we want to schedule late into the season. The Nature Center has been up, been operational for about 16 or 17 years. We have finally had to replace about 500 feet of the, the longest pathway in the Nature Center, and that was just done and completed about two weeks ago. I will tell all homeowners here something they don't really need to know, but the impact on galvanized two-by-four stringers, and anything that is galvanized in terms of holding your substructure up, has a very short life in our area, and the, the walkways there, the galvanized structures and the straps were severely deteriorated. It was really surprising to see how much they, they had just almost disintegrated over the course of time, but that work's been done. And Mayor, that's all I have, but I would like to add, we are at the close of a very sad chapter here in Bethany Beach regarding the unfortunate circumstance we had with our former police chief and deputy chief. I, I think it finally goes to bed on Monday, when Darren Calthell reports to prison in Devon, Massachusetts, to serve his two-month sentence, and Redmond reports to Beckley, West Virginia, to begin his 13-month sentence. They'll both be reporting by noon on Monday, and this chapter is well closed and well behind us. The unintended consequence of this, this sad chapter in Bethany is the, the tremendous difference in administration, in the caliber of administration that Chief Foley and Deputy Chief Norman have made in that department. So, the positive here is, just as you saw today with, with the chief in that department, is a huge turnaround, and again, the silver lining in a very dark cloud. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Cliff. Before we go into new business, I'd like to state that there will be an opportunity for public, for the public to address questions on agenda items after council discussion and before council votes. First item, this will be an, an old business item, discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a Town Council Protocol Manual.
Thank you, Mayor. After a year delay and several rewights, the Town Council Protocol has been updated and ready for primetime. Following the Town Charter and the stated laws of Delaware, Protocol Manual covers details and duties and responsibilities of council officers, council members, the Town Manager, in addition to details of all meetings, requirements, public hearings, rules of conduct, ethic guidelines for council members, city advisory boards, commissions, and committees. I move that this manual, as written, should be approved.
Nobody has any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The first order of new business, discussion and consideration and possible vote on a resolution honoring Senator and Mrs. Hocker as a 2025 Sussex County distinguished citizens. Mayor.
Thank you, Jerry. I believe everyone in Sussex County and surely in Bethany know Gerald Hocker and his wife, Emily. Gerald was born and raised in Sussex County, not like most of us. He graduated from the University of Delaware. He's the owner of G&amp;E Grocery Store, Hocker Supra Center, G&amp;E Hardware, just to name a few of his county businesses. He has been a member of the Delaware Legislature since 2002, when he started in the House of Representatives. He moved to the Senate in 2012 and became the minority leader in 2018 through the present. He is a member of six different legislative committees in Dover. His service to Sussex County and our area in particular is legendary. We thank you, Senator Hocker, you truly deserve this award. Do we have a motion to approve a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next order of business, discussion and consideration and possible vote on appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor.
Appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission are for three-year terms, and each year we have some, they're, they're staged, that come up for reappointment or changes of members. This year, there are no changes, but we have two current members to reappoint to another three-year term. There are Diane Fogash and John Gom, both of whom I see out there in the audience today. And I, I want to recommend that we do just that. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Whoops. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next order of business, discussion and consideration and possible vote on committee appointments. Mayor.
I think we have the Board of Adjustments first.
We skip the Board of Adjustments? Okay. Discussion and consideration and possible vote on the appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, appointments to the Board of Adjustments are also three-year terms, and have, we have two coming up for reappointment. They include Jonathan Johnson and Tim Hines. Jonathan has, has filled a full term, and Tim took over a partial term of a resigning member. Both have agreed to serve another term, and I would recommend their reappointment. Do we have a motion to reappoint Jonathan and Tim?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Now, now on to committee appointments. Discussion and consideration and possible vote on committee appointments, which we almost did out of.
I believe all of us on council have received the, the committee listings. I'm not going to read the members of each committee. Council does have a listing, and most are reappointments. We appointed committee, committee chairmans to our, at our September organizational meeting. The 2024 committees consist of primarily existing members to be reappointed, but we do have some new members on several committees, and I'd like to just focus on that very quickly. The Audit Committee, Patrick Shipley is going to join, if we approve him.
Can he be trusted?
Budget and Finance, Thomas Wigan and Mark Levin. On the Fourth of July Committee, Steve Ombre and Mark Bauernhofer. The Non-Residential Design Review Committee, Kathy Shorter is joining as the P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Member. And to the Stormwater and Flood Committee, William Pepper. Bios have been distributed to people on council, so you've already seen those. Do I have a motion to accept the, the list of committee appointments?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, and possible vote on a paving contract submitted by HCE LLC for the amount of $342,912. Mr. Gravier.
For years, we have had discussions, probably more than years, probably, it's easily over a decade, about trying to enhance the pedestrian thoroughfares on both Pennsylvania, North, South Pennsylvania Avenue and North Atlantic Avenue. We've had some great success here recently, working with RK&amp;K, the engineering firm based out of Baltimore with offices here in Delaware, on projects dealing with our, our streets and our crosswalks. An example of that is the, the crosswalk here at 124, and the work that they're also doing with us on the boardwalk, not only on the plaza area, but on ramps to the boardwalk. We've asked RK&amp;K to give us an estimate to develop concepts for creating a, a safer, more friendly thoroughfare on both of those streets, and they have given us this proposal. I think it's a, a very good proposal from them. Part of the proposal involves a lot of public exposure, a lot of public comment, a lot of involvement, and a lot of development that will involve not only the public, but the council as we move forward. Not only that, but unlike so many companies, they've actually given us a completion date of 10 months. I think this is a good opportunity for us, especially considering that North Atlantic Avenue is in desperate need of, of being repaved and resurfaced, and we also have some work that we need to do in the northern end of North Atlantic to mitigate some lead pipe that still exists in that water delivery system. So, with that in mind, and again, given the fact that we've spent a lot of time over the years discussing that, I'd like the council to consider this concept.
Okay, I think you jumped one. Isn't that, the RK&amp;K is?
Yeah, it's RK&amp;K.
Yeah, but that's, you were talking about Atlantic and Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Okay, that's RK&amp;K, and that's for $129,599.94.
You said 342.
I know, but that's, that's, that's a different contract. It's a paving contract.
Yeah. That's for September.
Oh.
Okay. That's not even on my, our list.
I'm screwed.
So, next, I mean.
Got it.
I don't have to do it over again.
I'm the only one that can't read.
That's a, that's a technical term for governance.
Glitch.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Are they going to provide total design, or is this just concepts?
This is concept, and it's, it's quite clear, and I think in my mail-out to you all, I emphasized the fact, these are, these are concepts, design concepts.
But detailed concepts?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. I mean, to me, that seems like a pretty decent number for, covering both areas, and it's quite a bit.
I, I, I'm, I'm happy with the contract and proposal, so yes.
And it's speedy.
Okay. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, consideration, possible vote on the proposal for McCormick Taylor to provide a construction oversight services for the Loop Canal Timber Retaining Wall in the amount of $162,742. Mrs. Teeman.
Yes, this is, it includes pre, pre-construction meetings we already had to move the project along. Request for information, supplemental reviews, construction oversight, progress meetings, and as-built review, and any necessary travel. They plan to have 24 hours of supervision.
I know I read the whole thing.
And they will provide weekly progress meetings, so that we can disseminate them to you all and any interested parties. So, I don't take any questions that you might have.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that's it. Thank you, Mrs. Teeman, for that report on that, that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have comments from the audience.
Can I have your comments?
On, oh, on the, absolutely.
Anything.
Anything.
Oh, well, that was back-aways, but.
You didn't recognize me back then.
Did you raise your hand back then?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
You're just not, John, you're just not tall enough.
John Gawn, 676 Collins Street. I have two, two items, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, on behalf of Diane Fogash, myself, and Mr. Shipley, thank you for our appointments. The question that I wanted to ask earlier was, can we get a status on the Loop Canal Bladder Dam project? Where it is and if we have an estimated time of completion?
Sure. So, for the major part of Governor Carney's administration, for the period of time when we first brought the, the dam concept to Denrick, under his control and his secretary's control, Secretary Garvin, at that point in time, the, the project went dead, if you will. There was no support from Denrick. We stopped our development, we had already done a 60% design, which our engineers tell us was more equivalent to an 80 or 90% design in terms of the concepts. We already had some good estimates, cost estimates, but without Denrick's nod, because it would be constructed on Denrick property, the project essentially was dead on the vine. With the change in the governor's office, and with the change in the secretary, with Secretary Patterson, there's been a, just a sea change, if you will. They are endorsing the project, they are helping us with the project. We had two hurdles to overcome. One was deed restrictions with National Park Services that the state held, and deed restrictions with the Army Corps that the Corps held over the use of the property. We have resolved the. We have resolved the restrictions with the national parks, and now it's in, it's in the Corps' hands, but right now with the government shutdown, the Corps is not as responsive as they might have been. Once we resolve that, and we're hopeful that we will, then we can begin the permitting process, which we believe will be, take a year to 18 months, and at the end of that, we should be ready to construct because we have all the, all the documents we need and the work already put into the project to create construction documents. So, in an ideal world, depending on what the Corps does and we get that final permission, I would say 18 months to two years.
Thank you very much, particularly for those people who live on Pennsylvania Avenue, and every time we have one of these events, the word is, if we had the, if we had the Bladder Dam, it would be better, and it just keeps going on and on. I appreciate it.
So, your maximum, your, your maximum height here with tidal water flooding was like 2.8 feet. The dam would have taken care of all of that, so whatever flooding you might have had from rain accumulation you, you would have had, but the tidal flooding you saw in the days you had it, we experienced here, would not have occurred with the dam.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, like Cliff said, it's, it's, it feels positive now, we're having regular meetings with Denrec, our next one is coming up here in November, so it seems to be progressing well. But, you know, as with anything with government, nothing is quick, and it looks like most of the major hurdles are, are certainly surmountable at this point.
Jen Carter, 429 Collins. Mr. Gravier, do we have an update on the sewer water relining of pipes and all of that? It's begun and we're just wondering where we are with that. Are we going to get an, an update, an email? Oh, and also, I have neighbors who are, who did not receive the email, so how do they get on that?
I really don't know, we have given the, the county, this is a county project, all the contact information we have, and they have assured us, they have reached out to everyone involved and contacted everyone involved. So, I do believe you have the contact information for the county, and I would suggest you contact them. Regarding what I know about the project, there, the sewer lines on Kent Avenue from Collins running to south towards the Kites was found to be problematic, and the sewer line on Collins from Kent to Fairway was found to be problematic. And unlike some other projects where the county was forced to actually excavate the sewer line, the county is now trying to reline, not trying, but they are relining the sewer lines on those particular areas. They're doing it in a way that's minimally disruptive, they're bringing some of the piping that they need to, need to use that would have been more disruptive to everyone on Collins from the southern side of the water plant, and they're only going manhole to manhole on Collins, again, in an attempt to be as, as less intrusive, given what Collins has already endured as they possibly can. They estimate the project will be done before Thanksgiving, and so far, they're on time and on, on track to complete it then.
Good, thank you for everybody out there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jen. Any, anybody else want to say anything?
Mayor?
Yes.
Was Bruce Fry at the last meeting?
Okay, just curious.
I did submit a report.
Okay, I, I motion to adjourn.
So, second, or so moved.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming, and thanks for those online.